Well, hello friends and welcome to the Tuesday, June 6th, Eureka City Council Meeting. We're glad you're all here and we'll get started. So first, we will read the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Droji. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And with that, is there a report out of closed session?
There is no report out of closed session tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. And could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here. And if all who care to would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and Mayor's announcements, we have a few proclamations tonight, which I'm super excited to read this very first one. This is in recognition of the 2023 Humboldt County Law Enforcement Torch Run in Eureka to support Special Olympics Northern California, June 14th, 2023. Whereas Special Olympics has been changing lives and attitudes for over 55 years, and today is the largest worldwide sports organization for people with intellectual disabilities in over 200 counties, and whereas law enforcement officers from around the world have logged over 500,000 miles running in the Law Enforcement Torch Run to support Special Olympics since 1981, and whereas 2023 marks the 26th anniversary of the Law Enforcement Torch Run in Northern California, and we will be celebrating the inaugural Torch Run in Humboldt County on June 14th, and whereas since 1997, law enforcement in Northern California have raised over 20 million in support of athletic programs, making the annual Torch Run the largest public awareness and grassroots fundraiser for Special Olympics, and whereas the city of Eureka enthusiastically supports the efforts of Special Olympics to deliver essential health, wellness, and sports programs, to promote social inclusion, to end bullying and discrimination, and to join people with and without disabilities together to compete as teammates in unified sports, and whereas the city of Eureka wishes to inspire greatness in our local athletes and commends the efforts of our Eureka Police Officers demonstrating their moral strength and courage as guardians of the flame in support of Special Olympics Northern California. Now therefore, I, Kim Burgel, Mayor of the city of Eureka, do now hereby proclaim June 14th, 2023, as Torch Run Day and encourage our community to join with all participating law enforcement personnel throughout Humboldt County in support of Special Olympics Northern California. And if you all want to come up to receive this proclamation, do the kids want to come up? Yeah, they do. Owen, Henry, Teresa.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I, first, I just want to thank your Police Department because you guys are very fortunate to have such an incredible group of officers here in Eureka. Thank you, Mayor. I'll, real quickly, I'll introduce all of our athletes to you. So here's Owen.
Hi, Owen.
This is Teresa.
Hi, Henry.
Danny. Henry. Nathan. And Lucas. And... So, this is a sampling of your local celebrities that participate in Special Olympics. So, the Torch Run is a really important event for Special Olympics. It's the number one fundraiser for Special Olympics in California, and we had a really successful run last year, and we're looking forward to it. So I want to let the public know that it's Wednesday, June 14th. It will be at 11 o'clock. We'll start at the Adorni Amphitheater area, and then we'll kind of wind our way through Old Town and end up on the boardwalk, and then the race will end at the foot of F Street. So it's a kind of a walk. We're going to have Mayor come out there, and she can run, walk, or just speak, whichever works best for your schedule.
I have ice cream.
Ice cream was a very big hit last year. We kind of ended the race with that. So, but we have sports year-round here. For those that don't know, if you want to go to the Special Olympics Northern California website, so it's s-o-n-c.org, you can get more information about Special Olympics, and we invite the community to come out and support our efforts here locally. And again, I just want to thank the law enforcement community, in particular, Eureka PD, and some officers are here tonight. They are our heroes. They come to all of our events, and they present the medals at those events. So they are very well respected and loved in our... So we invite you to come out there, become part of the Special Olympics family, and thank you very much for the recognition. All right.
We have special city of Eureka pins for these folks who are such rock stars in our community and really bring a lot of joy to anybody that they're around. I promise you, I'd be happy to put them.
I challenge anyone to race him with their butterfly stroke because this guy can do it.
Owen. There you go, Owen. Okay, Nate, come here. Here, why don't you get in here? There we go.
Best part of my day, right there. Our second proclamation is Proclamation Queer Community and Cultural Awareness Month, and I believe April is here to receive that. Thank you. Come on up if you would. Welcome. And Councilmember Moulton has that proclamation.
I'd be delighted. Thank you. The City of Eureka Proclamation in Recognition of Queer Community and Cultural Awareness Month, June 2023. Whereas, recent and well, recent as well as historic events in our own community have shown and emphasized how all people are affected by violations against those belonging to any marginalized group of people. It is extremely important for these underserved peoples and especially their allies to support each other, even band together to repel the negative forces that we may encounter. Unfortunately, there is still fear-mongering and disparaging societal views presenting themselves from various sources such as... As such, there are still many people that are being marginalized, isolated, or underrepresented, despite one of our community's greatest strengths being our rich and vivid diversity of people and cultures. Such events also bring to light the urgent need for furthering the reduction of the forms of rhetoric, prejudice, and racism and discrimination that haunt our community. This can be done in a manner that fosters awareness and creates a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community for all people of all walks of life, as well as reinforcing the First Amendment protections for such people and cultures. During times like these, the queer community can serve as an example of the resistance as regardless of any orientation, gender, ethnicity, or any other notable differences, people in the queer community have had similar shared experiences, and this is a strength that has helped develop queer culture, businesses, organizations, and people that not only serve, but also elevate the quality of wholeness of the community at large. And whereas, the city of Eureka celebrates the value, culture, and contributions of queer people to the community as a whole, as well as recognizing that the challenges and struggles of the queer community are akin to that of those that people in other marginalized groups have faced when their beliefs and cultures have been threatened. And whereas, the Redwood Pride Summer Community Festival Parade and Evening Celebration will be held in the city of Eureka on Saturday, June 10th. And whereas, Redwood Pride invites all people from Humboldt County, as well as the surrounding regions, to celebrate our unique and diverse community with the Redwood Pride Community Festival Parade and Evening Celebration. And now therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, hereby proclaim June 2023 as Queer Community and Cultural Awareness Month in the city of Eureka.
Thank you for presenting this and allowing this to happen. It's an honor to be here again. And actually, just been really busy last week getting ready for the festival, which will be on Saturday, which will have a daytime festival, which will be at the Jefferson Center from 10 to 4. And there will be a "We Are Here" parade in March down 1st Street, which will start hopefully around 6 o'clock and go until that finishes. And then there'll be an evening celebration at Synapsis from 8 o'clock till midnight. Just hoping to see as many people as we can there, and hope everybody has fun.
Thanks for being here, April. Okay, and then our final proclamation for this evening is for Juneteenth. And Dr. Kinte Johnson from the NAACP and C.R. Diversity Program, are you here? Would you like to come forward to receive this proclamation? And we've got Councilmember Fernandez will be reading that. Welcome.
City of Eureka Proclamation in Recognition of Juneteenth, June 19th, 2023. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and one-half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas, Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and southwest and in other parts of the nation. And whereas, June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas, the city of Eureka offices will be closed Monday, June 19th, in observation, in observance of Juneteenth. And whereas, Black Humboldt will be hosting an event celebrating Juneteenth on Saturday, June 17th, featuring a wide variety of Black curated events and projects. Now therefore, I, Mario Fernandez, on behalf of Eureka City Council and Mayor Kim Burgel, hereby declares Monday, June 19th, 2023, Juneteenth Day in Eureka, and urges all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city.
Thank you. On behalf of the Eureka NAACP and College of the Redwoods, I humbly accept this proclamation. I want to thank the city for the support so far in the efforts that you've done with the work around diversity, equity, the formation of the committee that we're a part of, bringing different groups, working on equity issues together. It's, we're in a unique place. I had a mentor said that tribal community members stated that we are in a place of reckoning as a community. And I tend to agree with that. We're in a place of reckoning, where there's a time for education, right? There's a time for us to grow and come together as a community. I'm excited to be a part of that work as the president of the NAACP. It's unique because I have the largest demographic area out of any chapter in the state of California. My area runs from the Pacific Ocean to the eastern edge of Weaverville, from the southern edge of Mendocino County to the Oregon border. So I encourage you all to get involved with the Eureka NAACP. We've got a lot of work to do that covers this area. We meet every third Sunday, 4:30. We also have other committees. Also, Juneteenth is Monday. There's an event happening in Sequoia Park, 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. There's a lot of vendors and workshops, so put on by Black Humboldt and a lot of other Black-owned businesses will be vendor-ing and tabling. So please, come out, be a part. Don't just sit at home on Juneteenth. So, thank you all. I know y'all got a lot of work to do tonight, and I got to get to my son's thing, so thanks.
Thanks for being here.
Okay, so now...
Mayor, can I just make a quick clarification?
Sure.
It'll be at Halverson Park on the 17th.
Great.
Is the Juneteenth celebration.
From 3:00 to 10:00 p.m.
3:00 to 10:00 at Halverson Park.
Great. Thank you so much. So I just have a couple things to report in my Mayor's Reports. First of all, I just want to say happy birthday to Madakit. She's 113 today. Isn't that awesome? Yes. Love that girl. Second, I do want to just give a report out on our town hall we had on Sunday. It was a great meeting. We had a lot of people there, a lot of diversity in who spoke. And it was very interesting because oftentimes, I think that we look at, the topic was the dynamics of the unhoused. And oftentimes, we see people on the street, and we get a certain idea about who they are and why they're there and what they're doing, and probably that they're criminal. And you know, there's a lot of things that people have ideas about, about people out on the street. And so it was really nice having Tom Steenblock from HCOE, or not HCOE, Humboldt Open Door, excuse me. We had a social worker, Tom Nash, from DHHS, and I'm so grateful for them that they were willing to, they're always willing to collaborate with us, and they have been, and I really appreciate that. Kristen Freeman, who is the woman, the director of the Women's Shelter. I was going to say Senator. Commander LaFrance from EPD, and then our own city manager, Miles Slatter, who also has done a lot of work in this regard. And I just want to talk about a couple of the highlights that were really interesting to me. You know, one of them was this whole business of, you know, we get this idea of who houseless people are. And many times, you know, with these skyrocketing housing costs, we're really, we're, most of us are one paycheck away from that opportunity, if you will. And it was really interesting to hear one of our speakers talk about, you know, having a checkered past and moving through the process to get better and heal and all those things, and applying for 30 different places to rent and couldn't get a rental because of her checkered past. She finally did have the money saved up and got into a place. But I think, you know, we forget, you know, it's important to remember that, you know, people come from all different places, and their stories are so important to understand, like, the behavior and that type of thing. And I just want to remind everybody, and not that I need to, but I'm going to anyway, is that all people, all of them, have value. All people deserve to be treated with respect and appreciation and tolerance. And one thing that was really beautiful that, you know, that one of the speakers said, he was talking about harm reduction, and he was talking about how that really takes a lot of community patience, but it really saves lives. And so looking at these things from different perspectives and being educated from different perspectives than from where we're at and where we sit sometimes, doesn't mean we're going to believe or want to agree with everything, but being willing to be open-minded and to hear different things sometimes can really make a shift in our perception and in our community. And I am so grateful to be in a community that is full of generosity and kindness, and I just hope that we can carry on with that and really build on that. You know, I've said it before, you know, we have 29,000 people in our city, and if each person did one thing a day, just one, that's 29,000 kind things in one day. 29,000. Can you imagine? That's exponentially huge in the long term. So, you know, I just felt compelled to say that tonight because I feel like, you know, sometimes we lose sight of what's important, and what's important are relationships and community, bottom line. You know, it's how we interact with each other. And so we don't have to like everybody, but I'm just hopeful that we can continue to move forward and at least being willing to treat people with a little bit of respect and decorum. So that being said, that was my Mayor's Report. Sorry for that. Not really. And we're going to go on with our presentations now. Summer mural projects with Economic Development Manager Asbury.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Swan Asbury. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city, and tonight I'm going to do a quick presentation on some mural projects that are happening this summer. I'm going to talk about four different projects. I'm going to give you an update on the intersection mural for the intersection of Summer and West 14th. I'm going to give you an update on our Eureka Box Art Program, the upcoming Eureka Street Art Festival, and then tomorrow, we are going to be releasing an RFP, a Request for Proposals, for a mural on Herrick Overpass. So this fiscal year, 2022-23, council allocated $75,000 for the participatory budgeting process, and five different projects were prioritized. The fifth one was an intersection mural at Summer and West 14th Street for $10,000. After that, staff reached out to a local art professor, Ben Benjamin Funky. He has a project called Rebound, where he does these kind of murals, like in high-traffic areas and intersections and on basketball courts. And since this is our first intersection mural, we thought he would be a good first artist to do this with. So Ben accepted the project, and then because the intersection is also near where Food for People is rebuilding, we asked Ben to work with Food for People on the design. And so he met with them, and this is what they came up with. It's very similar to their logo, and it went before Art and Culture and was approved. And so this is going to be getting implemented this summer. And we also have our Eureka Box Art Program. So in 2017, the city of Eureka adopted our Strategic Arts Plan. One of the projects in that plan was our Eureka Box Art Program. It was where we painted utility boxes all over the city, and that was a few years ago. So we went out and we did an inventory of a mall. We took pictures of each side. And then the Art and Culture Commission voted on the boxes one by one on if they were in good shape and they just needed to be cleaned up, or if they needed to be repainted. So we now have a handful of boxes that need to be repainted. We also have some new ones that are getting added to the list. So we currently have a call for artists out, and we are also looking for sponsors. There's going to be at least 10 boxes that will be repainted, and possibly more as we work with the different artists if they want to be repainted or if they want to touch up, if there's things that need to get touched up. So if an artist is interested in painting a utility box, this is their chance. Please submit a rendering, and it'll be put into a catalog, and then sponsors will be able to check, like, pick from that catalog. And information for being an artist and a sponsor is on our city website. And next, I want to talk about the Eureka Street Art Festival. We are coming up on our sixth year of the Eureka Street Art Festival. This year's festival will be held from July 30th through August 5th, and we will be painting 17 murals on or near the Broadway Corridor. And it'll all culminate in a block party on August 5th under Samoa Bridge, where we have the four pillars painted where we did it last year. So please save the date and join us. Block Party, August 5th, Eureka Street Art Festival. Before I move on, I want to point out the photo in this slide. In this picture, you can see two of the pillars that was painted as part of last year's festival. Four of them were painted. And this was a project where we partnered with Caltrans. Caltrans came to us with Clean California grant money and said that they wanted to do this. So after we were done with this, they said, "If we have leftover grant money, is there other projects that you have in mind?" And we said, "Yes." If we could do anything, we would love to do a gateway on Herrick Overpass. So just on, this is something that we've been keeping in touch with, but just on May 25th, they reached out in the evening and said, "We have your grant money for you." So we are going for it. It's a really quick timeline. But there's going to be two different phases to it and three components. So Phase 1 is going to be a mural on the overpass and landscaping. And then Phase 2 will be some gateway signage. So Phase 1 right now is completely funded by Caltrans and their Clean California Grant. They have allocated $225,000 towards the mural. $55,000 of that will be for the artist itself, and then the rest will go towards traffic control, equipment, things like that. And then they've also allocated for us $100,000 for landscaping. So the RFP that's going to go out for tomorrow is specifically for the mural on the overpass. And then after we have the mural designed, then we'll work on the landscaping. Phase 2, the signage, is not funded, but we just wanted to incorporate that design element in the RFP so as artists are coming up with their design, they can have an idea of what we would like to do down the road. This is all can be changed and modified, but this is just kind of a placeholder for what we would like to do eventually. Before I wrap up, I just want to talk about the selection process for the mural. So tomorrow, we'll release the RFP, and then we will form a selection committee. The selection committee will rate and rank all of the qualifying proposals, and then the top three, we're going to do a public poll on. So we're going to be asking our community to give us, like, tell, like, show us which one is your favorite, and then give us feedback on those three. And then our Art and Culture Commission is going to have a special meeting on July 13th, where they are going to have a recommendation to city council for which one of those three designs they want. And then at your July 18th city council meeting, we'll be asking you to select and approve the final design for the overpass. And that's it. We'll have more information on the website tomorrow, and people are welcome to reach out to me if they have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any just quick questions now? Okay. Thank you so much. This is real exciting. So we will now move on to our public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. And before we open public comment, I do want to read our decorum policy for the city because I think it's really important that we keep this in the back of our mind when we come up and are speaking. Public comments shall be limited to topics that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to three minutes. The city council supports the public's right to voice opinions and disagreement and encourages civil discourse on matters of public importance. Personal attacks or statements of a racist, hateful, or bigoted nature are strongly discouraged. The public does not have a right to make obscene, deflamatory, fraudulent, or threatening statements or to make statements that incite violence or criminal conduct. These categories of speech, which are not protected by the First Amendment, are not allowed at city council meetings.
These categories of speech, which are not protected by the First Amendment, are not allowed at city council meetings. Pursuant to Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-nine-five, the presiding officer may cause a person or persons to be removed for disrupting the meeting as follows. Prior to removal, the presiding officer, and then we'll just go on from there. That won't be an issue, I don't think. I'm not going to read the rest of them. I just, um, they're on the city website. You can certainly have a peek at those if you're interested. So with that, we're going to open up public comment, um, and let's start. Hi, Jessica. Welcome.
Thank you. Time for counseling. If you need a reference, I can ask our managing mental health clinician for a recommendation. Have a nice day. This is a text response I received from city manager Miles Slattery when asking him a question. It's discrimination to call somebody mentally ill as an insult. Mental illness is a medical condition and using it as an insult is harmful. Mayor, I know one of your key initiatives is addressing the mental health crisis. You've talked about how much stigma there is around mental health and how you're going to do your part to fix this. How do you feel about your city manager using mental illness as an insult to the people of your community that reach out to him? If your heart's truly in this initiative of yours, then you're disgusted too. We should all expect a lot more of the, than this kind of a discriminatory bully behavior from someone who's a city manager with a six-figure salary. Mayor, will you please do something about this? I'll email this text message to staff and council so it's properly documented. Miles has also called my partner and I flatterers and conspiracy theorists when we informed him that Councilman Mario Fernandez is not only an anarchist, but an author and organizer of Humboldt Grassroots, a violent anarchist publication and organization, which is also housed by the Inc. People of which Leslie Castellano is executive director for. Miles laughed at us when we told him, said he knows them very well, talks to them daily, and they're not anarchists. Then after being proven wrong, he decided to deny he ever said these things and bullies us saying we need mental assistance. And the thing is, I've heard the same complaints about Miles throwing insults at people who try to engage with him, numerous people. And if you want to deny it, Miles, I can get a list of a lot of reputable people and it would be a long one. Our city manager is paid like a professional, yet he doesn't act like one. He also seems to be proud of the current state of Eureka and is proud of the improvement of our crime rates. Which city manager, what city manager of a city that has crime rates worse than ninety-six percent of all the cities in the United States is proud? Some statistics from the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting, the National Incident Base Reporting System, and local law enforcement on Eureka compared to national averages are as follows. Violent crime is seventy percent, seventy percent, sorry, seventy-six percent higher. Property crime is ninety-nine percent higher. Rape is more than double the national average. Robbery is more than three times the national average. Eureka's overall crime rate is a hundred and seven percent higher than the overall crime rate in California. That's an F minus rating. The city is failing and Miles is proud. This isn't discounting our police department. They're trying in a city that's run by people who believe criminals are the real victims. We have three anarchists holding the majority vote, ones that endorse anarchy, really abolishing the police, all cops are bad cops, eminent domain, dismantling capitalism. Is anyone here proud of this? And aside from this, when I inquire about the six-point-four million grant funding from the American Rescue Act that the city was awarded, just wanting to know where these funds are allocated and who decided this, I'm told they can't speak to me about this due to a claim. This should be as public knowledge as the date of a meeting. Sounds like there's probably a lot of deception here, probably familiar to the Bay to Zoo Trail grant money.
Thank you, Jessica. Your time is up. I appreciate you being here. Hi, Mr. Gomez.
Last week being Memorial Day, I couldn't help but think of what an abomination some of our council members and others at the city are. And disrespectful to the memory of those who've, who fought for democratic values. And it's unbelievable that some of our council members through the Inc. People are actually advocating and hosting symposiums, symposiums, three-day, a two-day symposium, four years in a row on artists dismantling capitalism. That is undemocratic and it's unbelievable that that it's actually not addressed. I mean, what business owner, how, can we hold a town hall mayor on whether or not business owners want to dismantle capitalism in the city of Eureka? Can we hold a town hall where people actually get to be involved in whether or not our city council members should be hosting these symposiums? Can we get a voice as business owners, artists dismantling capitalism? I mean, that's an abomination to democratic values. And guess who else is, is a part of abolishing capitalism? Mario Fernandez over here with, who, an admitted anarchist and an admitted, uh, author and organizer of Humboldt Grassroots. These, these are his values right here. Fuck capitalism. Capitalism kills. Non-capitalism economy, a workshop, just like Leslie's workshop. So what's going to happen here? All these boarded up windows and all these for lease signs and all these for sale signs in Eureka? Don't you think they're pushing capitalists away like they've tried to do with our business? Don't you think that this is the cause of all of our problems, that they want to dismantle capitalism? Seventeen sessions, two days, and they're, they're even like role, role-playing how an anarchist society would look in a post-colonial capitalism utopia? This is happening under our noses. I mean, come on, really? Is this what the city of Eureka wants? Is this what business owners want to dismantle capitalism? I'm a capitalist. My kids depend on capitalism. A lot of other people feed their families off of capitalism and they want to dismantle it. They should not be voting on anything budgetary. It is a conflict of interest, Mayor. Anything budgetary, anything happening, happen, happen, happening around safety, anything that happens with giving money to the police department or anything like that, they should not be voting. It is a conflict of interest. The FPPC will agree with that, and I know it and they know it. You cannot be advocating to dismantle capitalism without involving business owners, without involving people who are a part of a democratic society that you want to dismantle. Anarchists. This is not right. The three of you, shame on you. And, and anyone else in the council who's okay with this.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Hi, Trent. It's been a long time.
I know it's been a long time. Welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to stand here. And I just, I'm a, I'm a local pastor. And I'm not going to blast anybody or anything like that. I'm here to confess and repent that, uh, for, for quite a long time, I would come and I was more active in praying for our city and for our elected officials. And actually, the scriptures teach us that we should do that. I should be praying for you guys, uh, regularly, often, uh, for God to give you wisdom and, uh, to help us. We need his favor. We need his help. We need his wisdom. There's a lot of problems, as you are aware. And, uh, so there's a group, uh, part of our church that have been praying for you guys regularly in the mornings every day. And so, uh, I'm repenting. I haven't been praying for you. We citizens of Eureka, especially, you know, people that profess to love God and follow the Bible, we should be praying for you. And so this is what the scripture says, just real short, and, uh, this is what I intend to do. So I'm sorry I haven't, and here it goes. Uh, first of all, I urge that supplications and prayers and intercessions and thanksgivings be made for all people. For kings and all who are in high positions, that we may live and lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good and is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth. So as we pray, there's some people in our group that hear God. God speaks and we're going to pray, God, give us wisdom. Can we give any answers? Is there any insight that you can give? And so, uh, just expect that as, as God gives us some ideas, we'll present them respectfully as hopefully wisdom and, and we'll be praying for you. So thank you for what you do and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Trent. Is there anyone else out there that would like to come speak? Welcome.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Kim. My name is Sunny Scrivner and I live and own a business here in Eureka. After watching the last recording of the comments from the last city council meeting, I wanted to come down here and speak to you all. I was shocked and appalled at the lack of courtesy, civility, and basic respect shown by many of the commenters. But what I noticed most about the folks yelling at you all was the fear in their eyes. I believe their bad behavior is stemming from a real place of terror. I want to address that fear, but first I want to thank you all for the work you are doing to address the real problems of homelessness and substance abuse that many in our community are struggling with. Secondly, I stand here as a mother and I hope that some of those men who were here yelling last time, especially if they are parents, will open their hearts and minds and listen to this mom's perspective. Imagine learning that your teenager is forty percent more likely to attempt to commit suicide than their counterparts. Imagine the terror that's, that statistic would invoke in you. LGBTQIA teens and particularly transgender teens are forty percent more likely to attempt suicide than their straight and cisgendered counterparts. Not because of their sexual orientation or gender, gender identity, but rather because of how they are stigmatized and mistreated by society. But there is something that changes that statistic, and that is having the love, the loving support of at least one adult in their lives. Just one loving adult drops those attempted suicide rates down to the same level as their straight peers, which is still too high. So there are two points I want to make about this. One, the laws that are being passed at the state level all over this country right now are harming our kids. Laws that flagrantly disregard the standards of care agreed upon by the American Medical Association for Transgender and Gender Nonconforming Kids are harming our kids. Those laws are telling our kids that it is not okay to be who they are. Adults standing up at council meetings screaming about drag queens are harming our kids. Those messages cause despair and lead to depression and thoughts of suicide. Let me reiterate that it is not drag artists who are harming our kids. It is the adults who are sending messages to LGBTQI teens that they are a problem. On the other hand, when a city's mayor chooses a drag performer as Artist of the Year, that choice, that message of loving acceptance is absolutely going to save lives. So thank you, Kim, Mayor Kim, and council members for everything that you are doing to make Eureka a safer, kinder, and more inclusive place to live for our kids.
Thank you, Sunny. So friends, I just want to remind you I didn't say it in the beginning, but please don't clap or shout out regardless of what people are saying because it takes time and it makes people feel uncomfortable if they don't get the kudos or, or if they get yelled at, they don't like that either. So, um, is there anyone else out there that would like to, to comment from the public? Mr. Parr, welcome.
Welcome. Hello.
Hello.
I can't, I mean, no one can help that notice all the attention being paid to the quirky crowd. I notice we had a special day last month and then they got the whole month this month and then another day in October and and, um, they have flags and parades and, and, um, and an army. And, um, and I just wanted to be a part of that. And so after much reflection and self-examination, I've decided that it's finally time for me to come out of the closet as a man that hopes to pork his wife in the butt. So my pronouns will be butt slash porker.
That's inappropriate, Mr. Parr.
Is it? Really? My, uh, slogan will be it snaps right back. And I even have my own flag. If I can get my own day, my own proclamation, maybe she'll let me give it a shot. So I just, um, I mean, it took a lot of bravery to, for me to come out and, um, announce this in public. So I understand what everybody else has gone through because it was really tough for me to do this. So at any rate, yes, so from now on, I would, I hope to be, uh, addressed only by my proper pronouns. And, um, and I hope to get the accolades and, uh, the benefits of being part of. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Hello. Ash Teeter with LostCoastPopulist.com. I'm here today to speak concerning the conflicts mentioned, you know, previously by Roy and Jessica. I was disheartened to hear how Miles blew off their claims without, you know, looking into them, dismissing them as conspiracy. Uh, I can understand why I did it. So, you know, many mainstream media and political personas shrugged off the group Antifa as merely an idea, not an actual organization. Um, this despite the Department of Homeland Security, uh, formally classifying activities of the anti-fascist group Antifa, um, as domestic terrorist violence, um, since early two thousand sixteen. Yet after that, it remains easy for people, um, to, to trust the narrative. So many media and political personalities that Antifa is just an idea, you know, with no defined organization, just pure chaos or anarchy, one might say. However, thanks to the brave undercover work highlighted in a ABC article that I have here. I've got to kind of grip things here. I'm checking out Miles. Yeah, um, there, he, he calls, he says they have like a target list recorded, that he recorded from planning sessions. And that, you know, people, they want to dox, making public their addresses and phone numbers to surveil them for possible vandalism or to kill people. More specifically, police officers. I mean, that, that's disturbing being that Humboldt Grassroots has affiliations with Antifa on their Twitter. The, the New York chapter, I believe. Kind of concerning to me anyways. Um, but yeah, this is conspiracy fact, not theory. So here are some other Antifa headlines. Should this kind of activity be funded or even, um, directly or even indirectly through the city's coffers? So here's a, here's a headline, uh, Antifa militant Shaylen Reed, who pleads guilty to second-degree rape of a child in two thousand seventeen, has been arrested for felony assault at a violent Antifa rally after confronting a man waving an American flag and attacking a bystander with a weapon. And another headline, uh, five Antifa members are charged with domestic terrorism. Cops swoop in to find explosives. Another one, uh, four arrested at Gavin McInnes's NYU event as Antifa protesters become violent. And, uh, federal authorities arrested Antifa activists following domestic terrorism. Investigation into attempted bombing of Immigration and Customs Enforcement in Atlanta. Antifa militants arrested for attacking Trump supporters and organizing into groups to carry out crimes. Suspected Antifa activists.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter. Your three minutes are up.
Thank you for my time to speak.
You're welcome. Thanks for being here. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Kelly. I'm a resident of Eureka and I came, actually not quite sure what I was going to talk about tonight, other than to thank you for, um, your support of the Juneteenth holiday and for the proclamation about LGBTQIA plus, um, month. Uh, I was kind of thrown off by, I guess, Mr. Parr and, and his, um, statement. And I just wanted to, it reminded me that a trans friend of mine said that they were kind of exhausted, always having to speak up for themselves. And so I just wanted to, I guess, just come up and say that I'm an ally and that I, I support them and, uh, the community. And mockery, uh, is, that kind of mockery really undermines that, um, person's message. I think it was embarrassing. I also wanted to thank you for pursuing multimodal transportation initiatives. I'm really excited about H and I Street having good bike lanes. Uh, I was riding my bike down Harris Street today, which has a shallow lane in parts and it's just like deadly, if you ever take it. So I, I would encourage you to think about those kind of east-west corridors that are, um, in the southern part of the city. And so I guess more substantively, I'm, I'm really excited about having more multimodal, um, transportation. And, um, yeah, I just, I support the city council in sort of keeping your priorities straight. Uh, you know, thinking about homelessness, thinking about multimodal transportation and supporting people who are marginalized within our community in the face of like a lot of, uh, just really, uh, strong, I guess, I, I don't even know if it's hate, but it's just a lot of, uh, people who, who seem to, um, to, to take out things on the city council that, that really, you know, don't have anything to do with you all. Anyway, um, yeah, for, for anarchists, you're doing a good job organizing, so keep it up. All right.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Erin. Okay. Anyone else? If not, we're going to bring it over to Zoom, and I see Althea. Would you like to?
Yes, hello there.
Hi, welcome.
Seems like you're having a pretty exciting evening. I think it's pretty funny for someone to reference a Gavin McInnes event to talk about, you know, opposition to Gavin McInnes being charged with crimes when Gavin McInnes's followers that are in prison for violent crimes are at a pretty high number right now. Don't want to go into that too much. Seems like we have some pretty confused people in the audience, people confusing, you know, who they love, you know, or, or confusing, you know, the, the love that people have between each other, confusing that for sexual activity. I think if I was, I think if my husband made a public comment like that, that's going to be entered in the city record, I'd be pretty, pretty furious with him. I hope Stephen is okay when he gets home tonight. But anyways, the real reason I came here tonight is I did want to, you know, throw down the gauntlet to the city council and city staff, especially the engineering staff, to dump the pump on June 15th, that's a Thursday. Try transit, try walking to work. Again, I'm happy to show you guys how to ride the bus, help you figure out the most efficient routes to get to and from work that day. You know, we can, we can go on some field trips, and since I have a floating holiday I have to use by the end of the month, I'll go ahead and take, you know, offer that opportunity on Saturday for the June 17th, Juneteenth event as well, you know? If you guys want to ride the bus or walk to Halverson Park, I'm happy to go along and show you how to get there. So yeah, you guys know how to get ahold of me.
Thank you, Althea. And I can't read the other name, is it Zee?
Zuzuka?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Zuzuka. Good evening, Council. My name is Zuzuka Sabata, and I'm an artist and theater maker residing in Eureka, and I'm responding publicly to comments made on May 16th and today by Roy Gomez regarding a community exercise class that I facilitate in Eureka called Punkersize. On May 16th, Mr. Gomez wrongly used the phrase anarcozumba, which I made up to describe my class, instead to describe the political motivations of Councilmember Leslie Castellano. As I explained on Facebook, the word anarcho comes from a Greek root, which means without a ruler, so anarcozumba is an exercise class without anyone leading the moves. Furthermore, I would appreciate getting credit for my work. If members of the public are concerned about my exercise class spreading violence, I invite them to contact me directly. I am more than happy to explain my belief that dancing benefits good health and actually prevents violence, whether to oneself or others. I also noticed Mr. Gomez on May 16th and today repeatedly using the words violence and anarchy together, and other people saying these things together, and I feel this is misleading and purposefully inflammatory. A quick Google gives the definition of anarchy as a state of disorder due to absence of authority, or the organization of society on the basis of volunteer cooperation without hierarchical government. And I'll add that many anarchist groups organize horizontally, but that's a lecture for another time and place. Perhaps at the annual symposium Artists Dismantling Capitalism, which I also am proudly involved in coordinating, including discussing the destructive impact of capitalism on our environment and communities. Again, I would love more credit for the work that I and other artists do in this community to quote, collectively create a society that is loving, compassionate, inclusive, and beautiful, which is the mission statement of artists dismantling capitalism. But I understand that making me, Zuzuka Sabata, the target of public attacks would not further Mr. Gomez's quest to hold the city of Eureka and Councilmember Castellano accountable for the loss of profits to his business due to EPD pulling temporary alcohol permits. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not actually a business, but a nonprofit or non-business entity called Forever Found. And as an employee at arts nonprofits for the last 15 years, I must say I've never heard of a nonprofit that bases its financial sustainability on alcohol sales. So perhaps non-business entity owner, Mr. Gomez, could apply for some grants instead of wielding my artistic activities as a political weapon and not even giving credit where credit is due. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
See no one else.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience? Okay, seeing none. We will come back to the consent calendar.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm here.
Hi.
I'm here.
Oh, hi.
Can I speak?
You may, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Here's the thing, I want to emphasize what, what Kim said. I thought that the meeting, the town hall was just really, and I've been to too many town halls on homelessness, it really was absolutely the best. And so my reason for coming back and talking today is twofold, but one is I want to encourage all of us to find some way to continue and build on the momentum that the city can't take the whole burden of homelessness, but you've already been a catalyst, and so I beg you to move forward and have another one where it can generate the kind of community involvement that we need to solve the different issues that keep coming up over and over from, you know, NIMBY to funding. And I absolutely did not expect that the city was going to fund AHA, but I was thinking if we could work together, can we get better funding sources for all the organizations? So having said that, what compelled, compelled me to come back is that I wanted to follow up on some research that I did, which might sound like it's in the past, but it really isn't. It's about Justine Green, who, as I've said, was known as somebody who was so kind and caring and respectful that she would not go to the Eureka Rescue Mission or to other shelters when she thought she was intoxicated. So what is that, why am I coming forward? Okay, I did get a copy of the autopsy, and what it says is autopsy and anabical diagnosis. Okay, so it says point 29 milligrams per liter of methamphetamine, and it's described on that document as methamphetamine intoxication. So I called, I did a lot of research, but then I thought I needed to talk to an expert. So I called Charles Van Buskirk, he's a coroner investigator of the county of Humboldt. And this is what he said he could tell us. He can't tell us specifically what she, how she was doing, because everybody's different, but he said, quote unquote, compiled virtue reports that levels above point two milligrams per liter is potentially toxic, actually toxic. Okay, but he says it really depends on the body and, and the thing he also wanted me to, he didn't ask me to share it, but he told me and I want to share it. He said, this is how he approaches everybody who comes into his office, quote unquote, no matter who they are, someone used to bounce them on their knees. And so I, I think that was the attitude of that meeting. So why does it matter? Why does it matter as we move forward? Because here's just one isolated person, but I think she's an example, and Peter, who ended up outside and died at the bus stop. I think the issue of barrier, I applaud Eureka for expanding barrier, you know, to include, you know, dogs and, and, you know, and the pets and et cetera. But here's the barrier I think is real, is the need to be protective of the well-being and safety of the guests, the women's side, particularly at Eureka Rescue Mission. And I applaud them for expanding their capability, but the question really is, when you turn people away, where do they go to? And I think, I understand that Eureka is very focused on the people who can be encouraged to come in and use the services available, but the point I'm trying to make is they don't help, they can't help everybody, and there are people out there with extreme behavioral or drug issues, and they, they shouldn't be, I don't personally think they should be among women and children. Okay, so moving along, one of the reasons that I, I ended up speaking about AHA is because I feel like it's my job to be a witness to some of the things that don't work, but I want to say this from the roof.
Thank you, your time is up, I'm so sorry. You could send your report in an email.
Come back again.
Okay. Please do. Thank you so much, your time is, thank you, thank you. Okay, do you see anybody else on public comment on this?
Any other public commenters on Zoom? No.
Great. So we will bring it back to the consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read, there will be no separate discussion of these items. And does anybody, did anybody want anything pulled? No? Okay. Did you, was it F4?
It was F4, thank you. Go ahead. Yes, item F4 should be pulled, please, for discussion.
So F4, and remember Fernandez, did you, okay. All right, so we'll be pulling and having a conversation about F4. So we need a motion and a second to move forward.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Minus?
Minus item F4.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Is the vote machine work, is the thingy working?
There it goes.
There it goes, okay.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Director Gervin, come on up.
Thank you, Madam, excuse me, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item we're discussing here, F4, is the wonderfully titled Multimodal Improvements 2023 project. I won't go into the rest of the title, but it is a pretty exciting project that's years in the making, starting with the North-South Multimodal Corridor Plan back in 2017, a couple of successful highway safety improvement program grant applications a couple of years ago, and then the design of those projects and the packaging of the two of them together into one bid that was done earlier this year. The, the bid was put out in, excuse me, in, in April, with bids opened on May 23rd, and we have a recommendation for award to Mercer Frasier Company for about 5.16 million with a total award of 5.4 for about a 5% contingency. The project includes significant pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements on six, seven H and I streets, including bulbous to shorten crossing distances, other crossing improvements including rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and on H and I Streets, the removal of one motorized vehicular lane to, again, provide more real estate for bikes, including buffered bike lane. So with that, I, I'm available for questions, and when the time comes, if council is so inclined, your motion could just be to, for staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Director Gervin?
No, I didn't have any questions, Mayor. I just thought this should be pulled because I know this is somewhat contentious in the fact that it's gotten to this step of, and now we're actually going to start. This was planned before I was in office, so you know, it has been, like you said, a long time in coming. I just wanted to get it out there and as part of public discourse that this is going to happen and why. So I guess that would be my question. So why? Why are we doing this?
Why? Good, good question. Like I said, back in 2017, the, the city received a Sustainable Communities Grant from Caltrans to fund the North-South Multimodal Corridor Plan, which looked at options for improving bike and pedestrian safety and bicycle connectivity from neighborhoods into the downtown and old town area. And there, there was a lot of analysis about traffic volumes, what could be done to improve bike facilities along that route, how to, looking at best practices for how to improve pedestrian safety, and ultimately came up with a recommendation to provide a buffered bike lane, improved crossings, and as I stated earlier, remove one of the three lanes of motorized vehicular traffic from each of those streets. Compared to other streets of similar volumes, they, they have more real estate than they need, quite frankly, for cars, and we can accommodate the traffic that travels those streets with just two lanes in each direction, and remove some of the hazards that are inherent to three-lane streets as opposed to two. So we took that work, council-directed staff to go after grant funding to make it happen. We did that. We secured that grant funding along with similar funding to fund quite similar improvements along Sixth and Seventh Streets, and we were awarded that funding back in 2020, and here we are with the project designed and bid and ready to go.
And just one more follow-up. Could you use, is there something special that's going to happen near the high school? I know that lots of kids are crossing those, those streets right around there.
So at, I think it's at Del Norte Street, and forgive me because I don't have the plans in front of me, but that's one of the locations where there will be, you know, pedestrian-activated rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and that combined with bulbous and removal of one travel lane will really get pedestrians, including students going to and from school, further out into the roadway where they're more visible before they're actually crossing the street, and give them a shorter crossing distance so they're in that hazardous area for less time.
Oh, definitely. Crossing multiple lanes of one-way traffic is just, it's so hard to watch every time I go through there. It sounds like it will not increase congestion, but yes, increase multimodal access as well as safety and pedestrian, for pedestrians, cars, and cyclists, so awesome. I know we're not voting on whether or not it should happen. That's, that was a comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
I appreciate you having this pulled, so thank you for that. It, it has been a contentious issue. This is something that was brought up to me during the earlier part of the election. It's something I get called about regularly, and it's one of the processes that we're in that's moving forward the way it is. I, I hear complaints largely from the folks that live nearby who do try to ride their bikes, just the transit corridor itself moves faster than the marked 30 miles an hour. I also hear the concerns of folks that, you know, are really concerned about losing those potential parking spots, and so can you address any of that at this moment?
The, the design really doesn't incorporate the removal of any parking. That was one of the reasons, or one of the considerations that we had to take into account when designing how to provide a buffered bike lane. And there were a few reasons why staff went with the option that we did, which is a, a painted buffered bike lane with parking in its current location next to the curb. Another option would have been a parking buffered bike lane, which puts, puts the parked cars immediately adjacent to the traffic lane and bikes in board of that adjacent to the curb. One of the reasons not to do that is that it makes intersections more complicated, where bikes then have to come back out into the, the real estate occupied by the parking lane and kind of makes it more confusing as bikes are crossing each of those cross streets. In addition, you end up losing at least one parking spot at each end of, of each block, so it, it can be a significant reduction. But as designed and as bid, the project doesn't incorporate the removal of any significant parking.
That'll assuage quite a few people, so thank you for that. And just for my own edification, how far south on H and I does the project go?
The, it goes to Harris Street, though other work that we're doing in conjunction with the project, same contractor, will take paving beyond Harris Street and what the southern limit of that is, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but south of Harris.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Conchera Stiloche?
I just have some questions, I, because I'm having difficult, I don't know how to visualize this. When it says reconstructing over 27,000 square feet of sidewalk, I have no concept. How, how many blocks are we talking about with that?
What that figure represents is mainly at the corners, so addressing existing radius, you know, radii at each of the intersections where the corners might not meet appropriate slope requirements, or incorporating bulbous and constructing new sidewalk that comes further out into the street. So 27,000 square feet, if we're talking about a lot of H and I Street having nine-foot-wide sidewalks, you're talking about 3,000 lineal feet of sidewalks, so a significant amount.
So this is mostly bulbous? Is that what you're?
No, that's a big part of the project overall, but the sidewalk work incorporates more than just the bulbous.
I just had one last kind of like general question. I was curious, there, there's a number of places in the city where we don't have any sidewalks, or they just kind of end, and then there's nothing. And I was just curious, how do, how are, how does that process work in deciding that we're going to reconstruct existing sidewalks versus putting in sidewalks that are still needed?
So the grant funding that is paying for this work wouldn't cover construction of new sidewalk in a different area. It's very specific to this corridor, to this grant application. The Highway Safety Improvement Program, or HCP, is calculated, the award is calculated based on a benefit cost ratio of the cost of the improvements as compared to based on a benefit-cost ratio of the cost of the improvements as compared to the benefits. And those benefits come from reducing collisions and reducing injury collisions, reducing fatalities. There's a numerical value that Caltrans associates with each one of those things. And then you come up with a benefit-cost ratio, and each round of that grant application, there's a different cutoff. So where that was for this round, I'm not sure. But other sidewalk gaps in other areas would be something to look at in future grant application cycles as part of some other, you know, more comprehensive analysis of a different corridor.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll open this up to public comment. Is anybody in here in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Come on up, Erin.
Thanks for letting me speak. So I live on H Street, and I watch, just a couple blocks from the high school, so I watch students crossing the street. I also cross I Street to get to J Street and the bike lane. And that bike lane becomes almost unusable when the high school students are being dropped off in the morning, which is when my morning commute is. So I just wanted to, I know that I supported this when it came out years ago, but I just wanted to reiterate how important it is to have multiple bike lanes in the city for things like when, you know, J Street is occupied by all these parents dropping off their kids, and so the bike lane's unusable. And J Street doesn't, of course, go all the way down to the waterfront. So I'm so supportive of the H and I Street bicycle lanes, but especially for making it safer for everybody to cross, and especially students, because it's crazy sometimes to watch them out there trying to cross those streets in the morning and in the afternoon. And yeah, I think I heard a lot of opposition to this when it came out. I understand the frustration of people who are trying to get as fast as they can down H Street, and you know, there is, there are speed limit signs, and so I see them frequently going over 50 miles an hour going down H Street. And so I know that people are in a hurry, but anything to slow them down and get people to think about going the speed limit is welcome. And I think that actually having these kind of, these kind of improvements helps people to recognize where pedestrians are, where bicyclists are, where other people are on the street. And it also, you know, it, having flashing lights for pedestrian crossings will help people to safely get to school. So I just wanted to speak in support of it, and I guess, as I said earlier, I'm really excited to think about how to improve Harris or other ways to connect the city, to make it easier for people to get around who might not be in cars. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, and on Zoom, Althea?
Uh, yeah, so I'm going to bring up kind of my frequent complaint about the rectangular flashing beacons that people ignore them, and they don't actually honor them when you, you know, press the button and get the flashing yellow lights. I know in the past, I've been told that they're easier to install because they can be solar-powered and like Bluetooth or something between the signal button and the lights. I did recently find out that there are also solar-powered Hawk signals, those being the signals that actually produce a red light that people legally have to stop for, like the one by the movie theater. So I just wanted to comment and ask whether it would be possible to get a Hawk signal there, especially on J Street by the high school, that's a really difficult corner to cross at on foot. It's even difficult to cross, you know, when you're in a car. And I would, again, invite any member of city staff or city council who wants to experiment, who wants to try this out on foot, I will gladly go with you to show you what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Althea. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak to this topic? Philip Bodri?
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. It is a excellent step towards the city where I feel safe taking my three small children out. I've been doing this a bit as the weather's been getting better. It's terrifying at times. And even on new bicycle corridors, we'll have people zip up and honk. And so it's a little discouraging sometimes, but we're making the right steps, I think. And I'm very encouraged to see this 10, six, very long effort be coming to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anybody else?
Seeing none.
So seeing none, we'll bring it back to Council for comments and a vote. A motion and a vote. Councilmember Moulton?
I'll move staff recommendation. Can I do that? Should I read it? No, I'm good, okay.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Thank you. Before we vote, I just have to say I'm so excited about this project coming forward. We've been working on this for so long, and I think what was really brought up was really important is, you know, our kids at the high school crossing three lanes. It's so wide. And so that opportunity for that shorter crossing is going to be a blessing and a benefit. And so I'm really grateful we're moving forward on this. So we have a motion and a second, and is there any further comments? Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So moving on to legislative action correspondence, does anybody have any legislative action? Nope. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to ordinances and resolutions. So we'll start with H one, Bill Number 1027-CS, Section 150.029, Board of Appeals. This is our second reading. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything to add on this one. There's no changes or anything, other than that staff just recommends it to be adopted.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? No? Okay, so there are no questions, so we'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this item? See anybody on Zoom?
Seeing none.
So seeing none, we'll bring it back to Council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move to approve Bill Number 1027.
You have to read the whole thing?
I have to read the whole thing, okay. CS, Section 150.029, Board of Appeals. The whole thing down there? Yeah, wave the full, wave full reading by title only and adopt Bill Number, okay.
Did you read the whole thing?
Oh, God, okay. And Bill Number 1027-CS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, Repealing and Replacing Eureka Municipal Code, Title 15, Chapter 150, Section 150.029 pertaining to Board of Appeals. Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
You can see why I've typically stayed away from motioning those.
Okay, so moving on to reports and action items. I one letter in support of AB 812. So is that City Manager's Letter or City Attorney Luna?
I'll take this one.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. AB 812 was one of a few pieces of legislation that was mentioned last time around by Councilmembers who wanted letters brought forward to consider and vote on sending letters in support. This is the only one that made it back this time for a couple of reasons. One, AB 972, Council asked us to send that letter right away because it was an urgent item, so we did that a couple of weeks ago. And AB 84 was a probable opposition until we spoke to some folks at California League of Cities who recommended we waited to bring that back until 84 had worked its way further through the committee process. There's some changes going on at the legislative level, and so it isn't quite clear yet whether or not the city would be likely to oppose or support. So we decided to hold off on that one and bring forward AB 812, which is a bill that would support setting aside a percentage of affordable housing units for artists in cultural districts. And there's a letter in support here for your review, and I also included what I thought was a very nice summary from the Assembly floor that gives you more information on that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for City Attorney Luna? Councilmember Fernandez?
The bill itself doesn't require, it just allows, correct?
That's correct, yes. It would allow a city or county to set aside 10%, it would not require.
Okay. I mean, it says a lot in the floor, or the Assembly floor description that you give us, that there's arguments in support and none against, so.
I think it does, yes.
Okay. Seeing no more questions, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak on this item?
Seeing none.
Seeing not, well, none, we'll bring it back to Council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Costellano?
Sure, well, you know, I appreciate this being brought forward. You know, again, it doesn't mandate that we set aside any percentage of housing for artists. It just gives us more options when we're going to think about what kinds of housing, affordable housing we put, especially in the cultural arts district. So with that, I will author, I will move to authorize the mayor to sign a letter in support of AB 812.
Second.
We have a motion and a vote. A motion and a second, please vote.
Councilmember Concharess Deloche votes no, motion carries.
Thank you. And we will now move on to budget item, or, excuse me, Item I two, Budget Policies for Fund-Balanced Streets and Facilities, Finance Director Millar. Welcome. Metropolitan Graphic Director?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My report tonight is about budget policies. I'll begin the report by speaking about the purpose of these policies, and then we'll discuss a budget policy for street infrastructure allocation, one for capital spending for city facilities, and then finally, a fund balance policy. So the city has a number of major financial obligations, such as the pension debt. So as of June 30th, 2022, Calpers estimated our pension debt to be roughly $50 million. We also have debt related to deferred maintenance when it comes to our major infrastructure. That includes facilities and also our street infrastructure. This number is hard to define, but to give you an example of the amount of funding we need for our street systems, I'd like to point at our 23, 24 proposed budget. In that, in the budget, we have identified uses of, or sources of up to $4 million. So we have $4 million for street repairs. Unfortunately, in the 2022 Pavement Management Report that looks at the city's street system, they estimate that we need about $6.9 million per year just to maintain the city's streets as they are. So if I were to assume that we have a gap of about $2.85 million for the next 20 years, that would mean that we have another unfunded liability of roughly $57 million. That is a estimate. Please don't take that too seriously. But the point here is that we have some serious financial obligations that affect us in both the near term as well as the long term. So currently, we do have a pension debt policy. So the purpose of tonight's report is to hopefully bring back to you the final draft when we adopt the budget for both our operations side of things as well as the infrastructure obligations. The theory of these policies is simply to look at the big picture. When it comes to fund balance or reserves, that affects all city departments and all services. They're to focus and prioritize what's important to the city and the city services and to plan for the future. These policies are fairly simple, in my opinion. They're easy to understand. They don't go into much detail, because I don't think that's necessary. I think they're really goals that we want to set so that, and we don't want to convolute a policy where you have to create another, a matrix or something just to understand what the policy means. So to begin, we're going to look at the street infrastructure allocation. So some background, before Measure H, so I'm looking at fiscal year 1415 to fiscal year 2021, because that's the data I have in our current financial system. So during that seven-year period, we spent about $3.6 million on street repairs. We spent over $3 million on safety-oriented transportation projects. And then we spent just under $8 million on non-motorized transportation. And a lot of that was the Eureka Waterfront Trail. So they put that in a pie chart. You can see we spend a lot of money for transportation-oriented projects, but little of that historically has gone to street repairs. The funding sources for this time period included HUTA, which is gas tax, and RMRA, that those are monies from the state. Those went to support street repairs, and then everything else was funded through grants. There was no local funding available during this time period, so that means no monies from the general fund. So after Measure H, and Measure H has only been around for fiscal year 21, 22, and 22, 23, we've increased spending substantially. So during that seven-year period before Measure H, we spent $3.6 million on street repairs for an average of about half a million dollars per year. After Measure H, during that two-year period, we've spent about $6.4 million for an average of about $3.2 million per year. That is great news, but as you can see, it still doesn't meet that minimum threshold to make our streets better. So the objective of this policy is to ensure the effective allocation of funds for the maintenance, repair, and development of the street infrastructure within the city while promoting safe and efficient transportation for city services, residents, and visitors. Funding, funding comes from the highway users' tax allocation or gas tax. It comes from road maintenance and rehab, RMRA. These are reoccurring, reoccurring sources that come from the state. And then we are recommending a minimum of $2.25 million. I'm sorry, I made an error in those drafts, but we are recommending about $2.25 million come from the general fund every fiscal year. This will be allocated for the maintenance repair of the existing street infrastructure. This will be allocated for the maintenance repair of the existing street infrastructure. And then where that money is spent, that will be identified in the city's CIP. This policy will be reviewed during the annual budget process. Next, we have a policy for city facilities. So the city owns more than thirty facilities in city limits. We estimate deferred maintenance to be around thirty-eight million dollars currently. So before Measure H, we had zero dollars available to renovate or rehab city facilities. Since Measure H, we've had over seven hundred and fifty thousand, but we estimate that we'll have about seven hundred and fifty thousand going forward per, per fiscal year. The objective of this policy is for maintenance improvement and development of city facilities. The funding will be a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars from Measure H, but will also include in certain circumstances, monies from the water fund and the wastewater fund. And then the budget allocation will be sixty, or two-thirds of the budget will go towards renovations and upgrades. And if necessary, only, or up to one-third of the budget will be for new construction. This policy is to be reviewed during the annual budget process. Finally, we have the fund balance policy. So this is a, this graph is trying to achieve a lot of things all at once, so let me explain it to you. So on the left, those blue bars are measured with the axis on the left. And those are total general fund expenditures. This graph goes back to fiscal year fourteen fifteen and then all the way, all the way up to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. On the right, what that represents are months of fund balance. So if for some reason the city stops receiving revenues, what that means is that we would have that number of months in the bank to fund our services. So when we go back to fourteen, or fiscal year fourteen fifteen, we had about half a month in fund balance. And if you look at fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we have over three months of reserves in our fund balance currently. So the industry standard for local governments comes from the GFOA. And what they recommend is no less than two months of regular operating revenues or regular general fund operating expenditures. We have decided that expenditures are the more appropriate category because these are things we control. And also because the purpose of those reserves is to fund the expenditure side of things. So basically, we've never had a formal policy, but we've always kind of went with that two-month threshold. And as you can see, historically, we have not met the two-month threshold until right before the pandemic, when we breached it slightly. And then after the pandemic hit, we had to utilize a lot of reserves. But as of today, we are way over, not way over, but over that threshold. So essentially, what the objective here is, is to set aside, or not set aside, but to identify when it is appropriate to use fund balance. And then to also set a target. So we've decided that based on the current balance, that we would like to establish a three-month or ninety-day target. So that means the bar goes from here to here. We're still in compliance and should be at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. In order to use that fund balance, it would have to be an emergency determined by council. That could include a recession, a major infrastructure project. It could be a large lawsuit settlement. So there are many definitions of an emergency. It's just something that the council has to agree on. And then the second part of the use section is that if the fund balance grows to over a sixth, six-month benchmark, we could use anything in excess of six months for one-time purchases. But I don't expect that to ever happen, so we don't have to think about that too much. So if we go below the minimum, which would be three months, what would happen is the finance director would be responsible for coming up with the plan to get back to the three-month mark. The council would review and approve the plan. And the plan should recommend the replenishment of reserves within three years. So that concludes my report. So I would like to ask the council for direction. But if you have any questions or comments, please let me know and I'll clarify those.
And just to be clear, this is just receiving a report to have discussions about. And then after that, those discussions are had, the next meeting, these would be brought back for adoption.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for Director Millar? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, Director Millar, as far as pension debt and street liability, I always get frustrated by, like, looking at CalPERS obligations because it's a twenty-year, right, it's a twenty-year look. But it's not what we are expected to fund in a given year. So people think fifty million, it sounds like an insane number, but it's a little misleading, wouldn't, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, I mean, when I throw out the total debt, it, it is scary, but that gets amortized or spread out over twenty years, so we don't, you know. It, it can be painful when they first, you know, change to a flat payment. That did hit the general fund pretty hard, so, I mean, fifty million is a lot, but that is, we're currently managing that situation. The one good thing about the pension debt is that it's always being updated, so we're well aware of what that obligation is when it comes to infrastructure. You know, there are moments in time every few years that we get estimates, but we, that, that really is a hidden number. But likely just as bad as our pension debt, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Contreras Deloach?
I had a clarifying question about the Street Infrastructure Allocation Fund. So when you put it up there, you showed that between twenty-fourteen and twenty-twenty-one, that seventy-five, or twenty-five percent went to street repairs, but seventy-five percent went to non-street repairs. And could, can you guys, can somebody tell me what that includes? That's what non-street repairs that are still street infrastructure allocation, what that is?
So if you add the safety, so these are transportation-related projects. So if that not only includes repairing a street, but also if, let's say, we add some safety equipment at a streetlight, you know, maybe we did what we did in front of, well, we, or Caltrans did in front of Broadway Theater is that they put that crosswalk. So that would go under the safety category. Also, the multimodal project would go under safety because that's the main focus of that project. Those non-motorized transportation projects mainly have to do with trails. So the big-ticket items in that category are the Eureka Waterfront Trail and soon to be the Betazoo Trail. So all of these things tend to get funded through Caltrans or through the state. We rarely, if ever, see any monies coming from Caltrans to help us with the basic street repairs.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that came to comment on this item? No, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I do not see anybody.
Okay. So because this is a report, we'll just move forward, right? Oh, let's comment. Councilmember Molton?
I had a comment, so I saved it until after questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report and for the breakdown of this. I just wanted to point out that Measure H was adopted by a lot of folks. It was my impression that Measure H was voted, it was voted on, but it was voted on by a lot of folks who were frustrated with the inconsistent street maintenance. And it's one of the great benefits of Measure H and that codifying a specific amount of money to go towards that in the future just seems super smart and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Councilmember Bauer?
Councilmember Molton kind of teed it up for me because I agree. I mean, the public wanted us to take care of streets and so I'm more inclined to say, well, just my personal feeling and what I see on streets, like, it's not enough, you know, that I, I appreciate the fiscal prudence of, of, of a three-month, you know, fund balance or, or reserve. But at the same time, we have a lot of needs, you know, now. So part of me just struggles with that, that maybe two's enough for a while until we catch up on our deferred maintenance, not only on our roads, but our facilities too. So that's what I'm thinking about while we're discussing this is we've got a lot and we have money. I don't mean to be, you know, spend very, you know, spend all of our money, but I just feel like we have a lot of needs. And maybe that's something that we can explore through bonds or something if we come to really large projects. That would work too, but just to be thinking about that, you know, is, is two point two five, how many miles of road is that? I don't want to have, you know, Director Gerbering come up, but it's not a lot, you know. So just something to think about. Maybe we split the difference on reserves and we say two and a half months is enough so that we, until we catch up and then three years we go to, you know, a larger, a three-month reserve, but just something to think about.
So that is council's discretion. It's really hard to put a number of miles to cost because depending on the condition of the road, you don't know what you're going to be spending. It depends. But yeah, that would be up to the discretion of council if they wanted to change the amount of general fund reserves that, that, that we put into the policy.
Councilmember Contreras Deloach?
So I, I appreciate, you know, the, the plan for us to have a solid reserve. I know I've talked openly that I'm concerned about what, how this recession is going to impact us. And that having been said, I also, it seems there's just a lot of discussion and I really understand it about the condition of our streets and how poor some of them are. And I, it, and it's a cost that costs everybody. So it's costing people with their alignment, with their tire wear, with their wear and tear on their cars. Like, this is like, this, it's, it's not a great thing. But anyway, I just, the streets, I think are, you know, it's just a basic thing. I wish it weren't too late to go back to maybe gravel and buggies, but I think it's too late, so pavement it is forever. But yeah, I don't, I don't know. I appreciate the kind of discussion around this. I wish it were an and, I'm not sure if there's some way we can, you know, balance that.
I do want to say that the, the two and a quarter from Measure H isn't so, as was stated in the policy, the RMRA as well as the HUTA funds would still, on an annual basis, be over three million on roads still. That, that's just the Measure H contribution to that, to the road repair.
And what you don't see, or what's not obvious, is that a lot of that HUTA and RMRA was going towards operations. And that's no longer the case. All of those operations are now in the general fund. So Measure H is providing two, or right now, more than two and a quarter million for projects. But it's also allowed us to take operations out of those other funds and open up those monies for the sole purpose of projects.
Councilmember Molton?
Besides the idea that throwing infinite money at a problem would always solve it faster, would reducing our emergency fund, essentially, to, to just the recommended two months, would that make an appreciable difference in how fast we catch up with street maintenance?
That's a better question for the Public Works Director.
Can we go faster?
But.
Is that reasonable? I mean, there's only so many people.
Come on up, Director Gerbering.
Second half of your question, it's likely that if we did take down the reserves to like a two-month threshold, getting them back to three months would be unlikely in any, like, short timeframe. It would likely take a, you know, very long time, if not new revenue sources, to get us back there.
So I'm hearing the recommendation is to kind of put some money in savings while we have it so that we have that emergency there in case we need it.
That's a lot of the, the thinking behind that, yes.
And, and there could be, and I'm thinking outside the box, so don't yell at me, but there could be kind of a tiered approach where you say, you know, three months is where we're going at. We don't call it an emergency situation. If you go below there, we call it some other situation. And we call the emergency situation with the thirty-six-month plan at a two-month level or something like that. It could be kind of tiered.
So we have Director Gerbering up here. And the question was, will the, will the, if we decrease, is this, go ahead, Kate, Councilmember Molton?
If rather than putting this additional money into the reserves, if we put that much into catching up on our street maintenance, would it make an appreciable difference in how quickly we can get to where we want to be?
So the, the short, short question would be, will more money get more work done? And the short answer is yes.
Right.
However, how quickly, like, how appreciable a difference it would make would really be dependent upon what that number is. And with the numbers that are here, I don't know what that is on an annual basis. And even, and if the council, you know, if we were ever swimming in extra cash and the council said, we want to spend, you know, some horrendous amount of money in a given year on street projects, there is a capacity issue. There's a capacity on the part of our staff to be able to design that project because it, it takes quite a lot. And to manage the construction and get a contractor able to actually execute that work in a given construction season. They're already challenged to do what we've got on the street as it stands.
So it's not necessarily a ramping up, like linear, if we just add more money, we go faster. There are these tiers and hurdles of the actual projects themselves.
Yeah, it, it gets challenging. The more you're trying to take on, the more challenging it gets. There's also, you know, conversely, there's an economy of scale. You know, you might attract better bids, you might attract more contractors with a larger project. But where we are right now, frankly, has been a nice balance of what we're able to take on, what the contractors are able to do, and we've been getting pretty good bids, so it's good.
And one more question that's sort of related. I know we were putting off a lot of things and when we got Measure H passed, that now you're able to start catching up with that. Forgive me if you're not ready to answer this question. How far are we away from getting to the point where you are maintaining the roads as opposed to catching up with the maintenance that hadn't been done?
Still pretty far, I think. Yeah, I, I don't have a good answer for you, but there's still a lot of work to catch up on. And, you know, we're, we're doing a lot more work than we ever have in the past, but still very concerned about the ability of Myrtle Avenue to make it to next year without significant work. The ability of Harris Street to make it to two thousand twenty-five without some significant work. So it's, you know, we're still catching up for sure.
Okay, well, I'll pass that on for the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Costellano?
Thank you. I, I'm, I tend to be fiscally conservative, so, you know, I appreciate the, the attentiveness to having a, a, thanks, Director Gerbering, to having a, you know, established, a three, three-month, you know, established fund balance. Especially in light of, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty in the economy for the next couple of years. And I do feel like it would be more responsible to have a fund balance and be able to kind of support the ongoingness of staff and. kind of support the ongoingness of staff and, you know, our programming versus kind of like go big on streets for the next, you know, six months and then have more uncertainty over the next two years. I think, also, you know, once we have the three-month balance, I mean, it should more or less maintain. It's not like we have to keep putting money into it necessarily. So, you know, and then, and relatedly, you know, I know that in the past, you know, there's a kind of a robust mix of funding that funds our streets, including grants, including, you know, other taxes and things like that. And so, you know, I know we don't always know what kinds of grants are on the horizon, but, but could you speak to, maybe just kind of flesh out some of that, that landscape of what funds the streets or what might fund streets in the upcoming years? Or, or could you, Director Gervin?
I mean, historically, the opportunities that we've been successful in terms of getting approved grant applications for have to do with safety and non- or non-motorized transportation. Those are, I mean-
Yeah, the, the, the one instance where we got sort of a special allocation of state funding for actual paving work was a long-delayed batch of State Transportation Improvement Program or STIP funding for certain key routes in the city. It had been cut and reinstated and cut and reinstated for something like 10 years and we finally got it. And it paid for a few streets, what, two years ago, I think, two or three years ago. But all of the other funding that we get from the state, some of it from federal dollars, some directly from state dollars, is for safety and multimodal improvements. And for projects like the multimodal project that council just awarded, we had to make that project whole with city dollars for the paving work. It used to be that some of those state programs would pay for paving work associated with state, associated with safety type of work if you needed to pave because of pavement markings needing to be redone, that kind of thing. They've really caught on to that trick, for lack of a better term, and, and now we're in a position of having to pay for paving work with city dollars, safety work with grant dollars.
And I'll add that there's, and I think council's aware of this, but there is a potential, I don't know what it looks like, but the county is going, likely to go after a specific tax for roads. And they've been discussing with staff a certain allocation of those funds that are generated in the city to come to the city. I don't know how likely that is, but that, that is a possibility.
Just as a sidebar, is the gas tax still declining?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay, I'm curious. Any further questions? Great. Thank you, Director Millar. Thank you, Director Gervin. We'll see you in a few minutes.
Thank you.
And do you have everything you need, Director Miller? Great. So we will move on to future agenda items. Are there any? Seeing none. Wow, okay. We'll move on to city manager reports. City Manager Slattery?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council and Mayor. It's less than a few minutes, Director Gervin, but Director Gervin is here to provide an update on our Public Works operation complex that we have discussed in the past mainly with other councils, but there's been a desire for a long period of time to get the corp yard, which houses all of our equipment and maintenance vehicles and all of those things that would be necessary for an emergency response to get it outside of the tsunami area. It's in the coastal zone now and in a, not a very favorable spot in case an emergency happens. So Dr. Gervin is here to talk about an update for that.
Right. Thank you, City Manager Slattery. So while it was less than a few minutes before I came back up, this presentation is definitely going to be more than a few minutes and I apologize for that, but it's, it's exciting for us and some, some pretty good movement.
Excuse me, Director Gervin. Thank you so much for coming up, but we've just had a request for a bio break. So we're gonna, we're gonna take, you know, five or six minutes to take care of that and then we'll be back. Beautiful pause of a moment. We are going to carry on now with Director Gervin's report on Operations Complex for the Public Works Department. Hello and welcome, Director Gervin.
Thank you. First off, I really wish there were more people here.
They're all on Zoom.
Oh, well. So, yeah, we're here tonight to talk about a pretty exciting phase of work for, for a significant facility for the city. A little bit of background, starting at a very high level, literally with a view here of the city, looking at our overall footprint, not, not all the way to the extent of the city limits, but most of it. See City Hall there where we are and the existing Corporation Yard, which is on West 14th Street between Broadway and Railroad, right near Costco. At that existing corp yard, it's, it's been in use since the 1950s. Some of the buildings there are original to the facility and they show it. They've got some significant deterioration, standing water on the floor when it rains. You know, you name it, they have it. The largest building was built in the early 1980s. That's our Fleet Shop. It was well-built at the time. It's, you know, been a good building. Not to say it doesn't have deficiencies, but it's, it does function relatively well for what it does. And the most recent significant work was the reconstruction of the water sewer shop after the 2010 earthquake. There are several known hazards for the site. It's identified in the local hazard mitigation plan because of its location, the tsunami hazard zone is being at risk. As, as we've talked about before, there's a lot of important equipment that's at this facility that facilitates all of our response to water and sewer and street problems. A lot of equipment for both police and fire that's housed there or repaired there. And if there were a significant tsunami that damaged the site prior to our ability to move that equipment, we would, we would be in a really hard spot. It's also in an area subject to liquefaction, which is where the soil becomes unstable during a seismic event. That is, that was one of the contributors to the damage to that water sewer shop in the 2010 earthquake that rendered it unusable. None of the buildings there meet current structural standards and depending upon how you classify it, this is either an essential facility or, or one step below that according to the building code and the seismic design standards. And we really need to make sure that in the event of a disaster, it's going to remain functional after something occurs. And then you add to that, because of its location, there's the potential for long-term impacts from sea level rise. In addition, that site has some existing deficiencies. You've got duplicative spaces where each of those buildings that you see has restrooms and employee break rooms, locker rooms, things like that, where because you're occupying multiple buildings, you have those functions that require more dollars to repair, more dollars to maintain over and over again throughout the site. In addition, there's inadequate space for the existing employees and not enough covered storage. And you can see there's a lot of equipment, a lot of vehicles that are left out in the elements. And we're talking about backhoes that are in excess of $160,000, specialized heavy equipment that's more than a half million in terms of our VAC con or service trucks for water and sewer. What have the earlier efforts been to relocate the Corporation Yard functions? Back in 2017, I think the mayor remembers the Kennedy Field Experience. We did do a conceptual design for constructing Corporation Yard on the combination of Kennedy Field and part of the water treatment plant footprint. I think it's an understatement to say it was not well-received by the community. And, and staff and council went back to the drawing board looking at other options. Jacob School was another potential site. You have now vacant school property. At the time that we were looking at that site originally, there were still buildings there that Eureka City Schools hadn't demolished. Another conceptual design was done for this site, this time with the idea of partnering with California Highway Patrol. Unfortunately, neither the negotiations with the Highway Patrol about that partnership nor the negotiations with Eureka City Schools were successful taking that site out of the mix. So we kept searching for sites. Some of those criteria, they had to be outside the tsunami hazard zone and not have the other hazards that the existing corp yard has, liquefaction, sea level rise, exposure. It had to be at least three acres. The existing site is between three and four acres. Three acres would be a very challenging bare minimum to deal with. So at least that size. And then limited habitat impacts. And when you look at some of the sites that are vacant in the city, they're in gulches and greenways. They have wetlands that would be impacted by development, which makes that development challenging and also, you know, potentially undesirable from a policy standpoint. So we looked at other options. Looked at challenging sites that might require multiple acquisitions. You know, is there a property that might, where you might be able to capitalize on some existing space and buy a few houses to make it whole? We looked at really everything out there and didn't see anything like that. We looked at sites outside the city, a few just outside the city limits. Unfortunately, those didn't work out either. And then we also looked at splitting up the corp yard functions to multiple sites, which would still require sites of a significant size. You know, if you had multiple one or two acre sites, could you piecemeal things to make it function? And the answer is potentially, but it comes with operational challenges and then it gets very expensive very quickly because like I said, with the existing site, you're duplicating all of these support functions within each building. You're duplicating your mobilization costs for contractors and some site development work that is just, it, it's going to be a certain amount with each site. So that again was taken off the table. So that took us to where we are now, which is frankly, you know, a little unexpected and pretty exciting. And that's the Ocean View Site here on the southwest corner of the city, accessed off of Broadway. Here's a little bit closer in view where you can see Broadway here, Bay Shore Mall to the north, the wastewater treatment plant off on the west, and then the Ocean View Cemetery Site with Sunset Cemetery down here. And the site we're looking at right basically in the middle of that image. It was originally a lot, an option of last resort. We really didn't think there was much likelihood of, of the property owner being interested in selling anything. We looked at a portion of the property that had never been used for burials and there were discussions and negotiations that went on for a few months. And tonight, I can say for the first time that we're officially in escrow. That's as of last week. We have a signed agreement and we're, both sides are doing a lot of work to, to get the sale closed and, and make this thing come to fruition. That's for about five and a half acres. That's represented roughly here. That's a portion of one parcel and all of another. And during the, during the escrow, one of the things that has to happen, one of the first things is a topographic and boundary survey that will really help inform the ultimate property lines here, then a lot line adjustment to make that piece of property, you know, a legal parcel, and then we can kind of go from there. So we have the studies and lot line adjustment underway. Ocean View, the owners of the cemetery have to do a legal filing, having to do with the dedication of that land as cemetery property. And then a conceptual design. And ordinarily, you might do these things sequentially, but given where we are and the schedule with the overall project, we're doing all of those at the same time. So right now, we're in a conceptual design process. It kicked off two weeks ago. This picture is not our operations complex. I want to make that clear. But this is another example of a site that is currently under construction that was designed by Scott Edwards Architecture, a firm out of Portland that we're working with. They have significant public sector experience in multiple similar projects, including this one, which is in Wilsonville. They've done others in Oregon City, all over the place, throughout Oregon. And several members of their firm have also done a bunch of work in California and know some of the constraints that we face here that are different than what they have there. The first step in that conceptual design is a programmatic analysis of our existing functions. So looking at the existing Corporation Yard, what spaces do we have? What spaces do we need from a best practices standpoint? And do we have adequate space for what's going on at the, at the current yard? We're also scoping the project and determining, you know, what our resources are, what, what our long-term needs might be and really looking at the, the planning horizon for the project. You know, the, from an engineering standpoint, when we design any infrastructure project, usually the minimum that we go from is a 50-year planning horizon. We want to make sure that this piece of infrastructure is going to last for at least that long. For a facility like this, we know it's going to need to serve the city for longer than that because there are so few options out there for other sites. So we're looking at a 75 to 100-year planning horizon. So we want to take into consideration what changes the city might experience in that time and make sure that the buildings remain serviceable for as long as possible. In looking at our existing facilities and even looking within the footprint of our existing corp yard, we can see buildings that were well-planned and well-executed and we can see buildings that were basically done as, you know, kind of slapped together as quickly as possible because of the needs at the time. So we have to balance our resources now and in the future with our needs now and in the future. And that's a complicated function. But Scott Edwards Architecture, they have some experience with it. They're helping to guide us through that process. We have today, for the first time, seen a few of the first site design comp concepts for the Ocean View Site. These will all be refined. They, they won't look like this in the end, but I did want to, you know, show council some of the work that's happening. This is one of them. Option A, I think this was not as well-received as options B1 and B2, which orient things differently. There are some commitments that we made to the sellers of the property and how to orient buildings at the site and functions to include and not include. One of the things that we committed to is, to the extent feasible, orienting buildings so that open storage areas would be protected from the view of the cemetery. We want to be sensitive to our surroundings and sensitive to the, the people who are going to the cemetery, you know, for, to visit their loved ones and that sort of thing. So looking at some of these previous options that show storage to the north of the buildings visible from the cemetery, maybe not, maybe that's a different look than just employee parking on the north side. It's not really, it doesn't look as unattractive as, as the open storage. Upcoming in the conceptual design process are some site visits where staff is going to be visiting other, either under-construction or recently completed, not so recently completed facilities elsewhere to see what other jurisdictions have encountered, what have they built, how is it working, those sorts of things. We're going to be refining some of the concepts that I just showed you and then coming up with a cost estimate and in all likelihood, value engineering the project to make that cost estimate come back somewhere into reality. And then developing a final conceptual design that would help to inform our financing process and figuring out what means we have to, to finance these improvements. It's going to be significant enough. It's not going to be cash. It's going to have to be paid for over a period of time. And there are a few different ways of getting there and, you know, the first step in determining that is determining what the project might cost. So what's next? We have a lot more to do, including right now- Including right now, we need to figure out how we're going to do the actual procurement of the construction. How do we select a contractor? And one thing that staff is looking at in partnership with the city attorney and an attorney who specializes in public contract code work is the idea of construction manager at risk procurement. What that means is that you you bring on a contractor that's selected through a request for qualifications process early on, like when you start design or before you start design. And that contractor works with your design firm to help inform the design process, help to give a reality check on some of the cost estimates, talk about constructability, especially in Humboldt County, because we don't have access to some of the same types of construction here because of labor constraints, because of material challenges, those sorts of things. And then at the end of the design process, that contractor who's functioning as the construction manager at risk gives the city a guaranteed maximum price and that that guarantee is sort of in quotes, there are always always change orders during construction. You know, when there are projects as significant as this, but still at the outset, you have basically the contractor gives a final bid on the project. And if that number is something that the city can agree to and everyone's in agreement, then you can move forward with that construction, that next phase of the contract gets triggered and you hit the ground running. If the city and that construction manager at risk can't agree on a construction price, then the city says, okay, thank you contractor for your services during construction. Here's a relatively small amount that we agreed on ahead of time for your work during the pre-construction phase, during the design phase. And now we're going to put the project out to bid like we normally would. And then we ask for bids from other contractors. The other thing is to solicit scope and fee proposals from our on-call architects. Earlier this evening, the council awarded the on-call consulting services contracts to a whole slew of consultants, including four architecture firms, Scott Edwards being one of them. And after the conceptual design is done, staff's intent is to take that conceptual design and hand it to each of those firms and ask for a scope and fee proposal for design of the actual construction documents. Circulate the RFQ for contractors who would be qualified to be the construction manager at risk, if that's the procurement method that staff ultimately recommends to council and council moves forward with and then begin that design. We do have a pretty aggressive schedule, as I mentioned, which is why we have so many things happening concurrently. The goal here, which is aggressive, is to begin site work during the 2024 construction season. And to have a workable sort of weathered in site by the fall of 2024, which would allow work on the buildings themselves to continue through the winter with completion by the end of 2025. I have a question mark there and maybe it should have been an exclamation point instead, like, yeah, we're going to do it. But it's a challenge. It's a real stretch, but we're doing everything we can. I think you can sense that there's a lot in motion. And we're, I think we're doing everything we need to make it happen. So with that, I'll hand it over to council for any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you. Director Gerbing, do we have council member Molton?
Jump right in there. I I sure do like this site. And not just because it's in my ward and that makes me feel special. I just love that it's kind of hidden back there, but it's outside the tsunami zone. Like what a find in the city that's so built out to be able to find that much land up above the the tide line. But I had a question, which is a question that I'm sure I'm going to get about the different studies that are being done on the land. This is undisturbed, right? Is this is undeveloped, undisturbed land?
It's it's undeveloped right now. That's not to say that it hasn't been disturbed. At some point in the past, there was, we know from some earlier studies that were done in the area, there there was a farm that covered that area before the cemetery purchased the property. So there has been activity there, but the surveys that we have underway are first off, the topographic and boundary survey, just to determine what's the terrain like, what would the limits of the parcel be? An archaeological survey, which is partially, you know, looking at maps, looking at books, things like that. And then doing some site work as well. We have a geotechnical investigation underway to really nail down what the soils are like here, based on geotechnical investigations from adjacent properties. And knowing that this site is very much the same as those adjacent properties, we don't have any real concerns, but we still have that study underway. As well as a biological survey to figure out what sort of flora and fauna are there? Are there any species that we need to be concerned about when developing the project? And again, looking at the site at a very high level, there's nothing that jumps out at at us or the consultants that we've spoken with.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Council member Bauer?
No, I just want to thank you for Director Gerbing for finding such a good good site and for also for planning for three generations, which is pretty unusual for a city to do that, you know, 7,500 years. That's a really forward-thinking part of the process. I appreciate that. I just had a question though. When it comes down to it, in the end, I mean, we're talking probably what? $30 million project? What do you think?
Good thing Director Millar left for that one. No, we we definitely hope it's not that. And I don't want to circulate any number just yet, but I don't think that number would be feasible. So we really need to look at look closely at that balance between the cost of the project, what we can accommodate and what the needs are. But my my expectation is that it's significantly less than that, but it will be a big project.
I think I just really meant for us to think about is something capital outlay that we have to think about in the future and we want something that's going to be long lasting. So, you know, kind of whatever it's going to take.
Yeah, well, I'd say whatever it's going to take. So that the fund balances that were the fund balance policies that were discussed earlier were kind of done with an idea of this being financed. And so I think that needs to be taken into consideration about what we can afford and what that looks like, because this money will be coming from those facility monies that were discussed in that fund balance. And so if there is a financing tool, there will be whatever that is, obligation bonds or just straight financing, whatever it may be, it will need to be fit within the range of what we can afford to pay back.
And, you know, as with the operations, the existing site, whether it's the maintenance activities or the personnel and equipment at the existing corp yard. You know, it's paid for from multiple funds, from general fund, from equipment operations, which is allocated out to multiple funds and from the water and sewer funds. And so one of the things that we're doing now is determining what's a methodology that makes sense for the allocation of the costs of this new facility to each of those funds, to the general fund, the water and wastewater funds. And there are a few different ways of looking at it and we haven't finished that analysis yet, but we're definitely talking about it.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Director Gerbing. We appreciate you. And with that, we will turn it over to council reports. So we will start with council member Castellano.
Okay, I'll be quick. I attended the Alliance for California Traditional and a meeting with the Alliance for California Traditional Arts, several housing-related meetings, one where we really went down the rabbit hole on upcoming legislation related to land trusts, which is actually kind of fascinating. And there's some interesting funding that's coming up related to land trust and funding for homes that are in foreclosure, at risk for going going into foreclosure, in which funding could be used to put those properties into trusts. Anyway, I thought that was pretty fascinating and potentially a resource for the city or for, you know, the city in collaboration with other organizations. I attended an event related to that was projects funded through HCOG's allocation allocation of REAP funding, regional early action plan funding. That was stories around housing and housing insecurity. I spoke at a chamber conversation on housing along with some industry leaders and other planners and with city manager Slattery. So thank you for that. And I attended a California Forward Planning Meeting related to the Economic Summit that's going to be in, I think, October.
Thank you. Council member Bauer?
I knew you were going to jump over to me. I had a feeling. Yeah, I attended our CEA board meeting and I just want to let people know that it's a pretty fun thing to, if you're interested in energy. I suggest you attend because it's pretty interesting stuff we're doing. Met with the folks at Keep Eureka Beautiful, did the pack out cleanup down on the Hickshary Trail, which was always pretty fascinating to see so many people turn out. Thank you, everybody. And, you know, get our get our waterfront looking good. So it was a good time. Also attended a couple dinners, a labor dinner and a firefighter dinner. That was great and appreciate that. And Chief Robertson and I cooked an ungodly amount of burgers and hot dogs for the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association annual meeting, which was a good time, trying to keep up with all the all the great bike community that showed up. And I have one last thing, a coworker of mine, she had altercation while on her bike. I should have probably brought this up when we were discussing multimodal corridor, but somebody came by and almost got her and she kind of gave him the, hey, man. And he decided to pull over and jump out of his car and basically threaten her. I just want people to, you know, think about sharing the road, you know, it's not hard. And don't threaten people who are just trying to get to work on a bicycle. I just think that's something that civility, we see it all the time. We hope people practice it and that's just something that is unacceptable in our community. So please respect each other's choices of communication or of of transportation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Bauer. How about council member Fernandez?
Held my first town hall back on May 18th, largely discussing the planning process, planning and permitting process. Some good questions, lively discussion. I'm grateful for the residents that turned out and for our city staff that were there to help facilitate the questions and answers. So thank you to our city clerk, our city manager and planning director is the correct title, right?
Correct director, Kenyon.
Yes.
And so development services, I'm sorry, planning and building.
See, that's why I had to ask. So I'm looking forward to the potential workshop that was discussed with Dr. Stokes. And I really appreciate him coming out to field any questions and kind of give his vision on what that potential project might look like. Next week, I'm planning to attend the California Climate and Energy Forum in Santa Rosa. So I'll report back on that on our June 20th. Happened to witness our illustrious mayor at the Empty Bowls fundraiser at Jefferson Community Center last week. Attended the town hall this past weekend on mental health and I'm hopeful, given that turnout, that people are learning and wanting to engage more in our processes and programs to help solve the issue of homelessness and get the help that that particular population needs. As council member Bauer alluded to, I I also attended the the labor banquet where I was awarded the Union Member of the Year award. Thank you. No clapping. Silent applause only. Yeah. So I'm very grateful for the Humboldt Del Norte Central Labor Council for that that opportunity and that award. Responding to constituent concerns and issues always ongoing. Coincidentally, none of them are regarding my ties to anarchism. And Eureka City Schools denounced its continuing summer community meals program starting June 26th through August 11th. Trying to remember the sites, which is why I had to write it down. Yeah, Alice Bernie is one of them. Alice Bernie, Washington Elementary, Zane Middle School and Eureka High. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So appreciative of Eureka City Schools for feeding our kids. Yes. Food insecurity is a big deal. Council member Molton?
Thank you. I don't have any council-related travel, but I did get to go out to the Kinetic Grand Championship for all three days, of course, the one that is here in Eureka. But I wanted to mention the one in the Wiggy Dunes. There's a hazard out there called Dead Man's Drop that happens to take place right in the middle of the largest contiguous dune forest on the coast. And it's a beautiful piece of land that the race has been going through for many decades. And I was incredibly impressed to see many thousands of people hike out into this dune where there are no facilities and no garbage cans. And when I left with the ground pounders at the very end of the day, it was pristine. It was beautiful. From the breakers to the road, it was absolutely clean. And so what a great community we have that they could go out there and basically party kinetic style for several hours and leave no trace. I thought that was very impressive. I get to do some lecture series locally, always speaking about you just mentioned, you've some, you mentioned giving a lecture, that I give lectures to the Rhodes Scholars about the value of kinetics and the public art in Eureka. And it's great to talk to folks from around the country who don't have as vibrant arts and culture scene as we do here. And it just makes me really grateful for the effort of our community to put that, to just keep pushing that and keep supporting that to make it happen. Arts Alive this month was absolutely huge. The Forest Moon Festival brought a lot of people into town, but Arts Alive itself is just getting back to how I remember it back in the day. Absolutely packed. So grateful for those street closures and seeing people kind of spilling outside the boundaries and moving all around Old Town. And there's shops and galleries just kind of popping up all over and people actually going out to go to those places. And it was really good to see as I walked around Old Town. That's all I've been doing, but looking forward to the two by two with the Chamber of Commerce, always great to talk to our local businesses. And to the JPA meeting, the Joint Powers Authority around fire and safety. And it's coming up soon. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And council member Concheras Deloche?
Yeah, so I got to go to council member Fernandez's council or his, what do you call it, a town hall, his town hall. That was really exciting to kind of hear Dr. Stokes talk about some of the plans and stuff like that, and also to kind of see how a town hall look. And then I got to go out to that kite festival and kind of see that was really something. I love that we have so many unique, interesting things going on always here. And bumped into council member Castellano Castellano there. And then got to be on that Zoom for that chamber housing meeting, which I thought was really great that our city manager spoke on and also council member Castellano got to meet with economic development and swan. That was awesome. Just to kind of hear about like what some of their plans are and like what they're working on and some of the different things that they're rolling out or changing and, you know, just it's really again, I know I've said this before, but I'm always impressed by like how much our staff like their jobs and are really like dedicated and into doing stuff. Like I think that's just really cool that they're just sincerely excited about trying to make things happen for the city. I just, I feel like we're so fortunate. Got to go to the fired awards dinner and I got to say, I've been to a bunch of different things since being elected and they know how to have fun. That that was a lot of fun and just really cool to also just see the people that were honored there and what they were honored for and just so impressed. That's a truly very heroic profession and very grateful for them. Went to the labor dinner, got to see council member Fernandez honored. That was really cool, honestly, to kind of hear people speak about some of the work that he's done to really advocate for particularly nurses and, you know, during a pandemic and just hear about the work he's done for other people and services he's done in his own family. It was just really very touching. Got to go to Kristen Getz Retirement. It was awesome. So so thankful to her for spending all that time and working here and it was really nice. Got to attend part of the town hall that the dynamic of the unhoused, I thought that that was really great to kind of hear these different stories. I loved the story. She runs the women's and I'm trying to remember her name, Kristen. That was so impressive. Um, that was so impressive. I felt like that was just so good to be able to kind of share her story and I, um, I hope it gives people hope that there's, that there's hope. Um, and then kinetic race, so cool. Uh, and then we went to the Forest Moon Festival at the zoo because we are nerds and it was really a lot of fun and we had tiny itty bitty. They went so all out. I was so impressed with everything they did to try to make it weird and seem otherworldy and alien, like the food was strange. So, um, it was great though, the cupcakes. And then we had little tiny lightsabers and we had a tiny lightsaber fight. So I don't know if I needed to share that over this, but that was, it was a lot of fun. We live in such a great quirky place. So, um, it's great.
Thank you. And with that, we'll see you next time. We're adjourned.